So, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this is the intended structure for this workshop. So, you can kind of see generally, I'll linger on this slide for just a few moments. So, you can kind of see generally what the flow of this is going to look like. The information is going to be presented at a fairly high level for this workshop. But I think generally, and I'm kind of along the lines of what Scott just alluded to, the biennial budget, we do, we did create this biennial plan basically following the already approved fiscal plan. So, what we're proposing for a budget for the next two years is in line with what you would have already seen through the fiscal planning process. So, what I first want to do, let's see if I can. So, what I first want to do is just briefly review our year-to-date results for the general fund. So, first, we're going to look at expenses. And as you can see, 2022 is the darker blue line there, 2021 is the lighter blue line. We're in line with what we spent a year ago as of August. So, we haven't actually closed the month of September. So, the kind of the latest and greatest information we have is as of the end of August for this year compared with last year. Current revenues pretty much exactly in line with where we were a year ago. And then last would just be looking at the net results. So, this is whether our revenues exceed our expenditures. And you can see that as far as trends and kind of, kind of directionally at least, we're tracking along with last year as well. So, we did just want to briefly review kind of our 2022 year-to-date general fund review. There really haven't been any surprises. We're tracking with prior year and going into our, again, 23 budget, 24 budget, tracking with our fiscal plan there as well. So, we're going to linger on this slide a little bit because it's, it's a really important one in terms of providing some context to you and to the community as far as how we arrive at the biennial budget that's going to be before you. So, we really start with the high-level strategic plan, which is a tool then that the city internally, we kind of distill into a work plan. We distill into more tangible, actionable items that accomplish what we've set as our overall strategic plan for the next several years. Part of that includes other financial planning tools like the capital improvement plan, which you may be familiar with. Obviously, it's our five-year plan for our capital qualifying expenditures. So, anything with a, with an expense amount of $5,000 or more would be useful like greater than one year is what we seek to incorporate into our, into our capital improvement plan or CIP. We also have tax increment district plans. So, every time one of our TIDs is created or amended, we have a project plan that goes along with that that goes through a review process, including the joint review board, plan commission, and then you as a city council. And we take that plan and we use the budgeting process as our, as our tool for implementing what was already adopted in our TID plans. We have business plans for our utilities that we're actually in the process through the current list of strategic initiatives we're working on for you. We are updating a couple of them. So, those, those business plans are almost like the fiscal plan but for each of our utilities. And so, those get updated periodically to provide you with high-level information as far as the strategies for utilities and then financial information for the next seven years. And then last is our fiscal plan. So, that is our five-year plan, planning tool for our general fund and to some extent to our library. And it also includes other information about various resources, fiscal resources that go into our budget. So, we use it as a tool to identify what fiscal resources we utilize. Take that as an opportunity to point out any additions that weren't included in prior budgets that would be new to the city. And then we create a five-year roadmap that we then use our biennial budget process to, to follow. So, of course, you know, a budget similar to a fiscal plan or a business plan or TID plans, they are plans. So, inherent to any biennial budgeting process, obviously, there is some flexibility. But of course, we have to start with the budget and go from there. And then, of course, I guess the last thing I want to point out is, is as staff, we are monitoring not only our year-to-date budget, as you just saw in the previous slides, but we're monitoring our fiscal plan, we're monitoring the TID plans and our utilities from a year-to-date budget perspective as well. So, that information, that kind of regular feedback throughout the course of the current fiscal year helps us make decisions about what we're planning for the next couple of years through the biennial budget process. So, then moving on to budget themes that were included as part of us developing the 2023, 2024 biennial budget. First is fiscal sustainability and financial sustainability. You would have already seen this in a prior budget. This is simply a carryover of a prior theme. Financial sustainability is something that, that you as a council have always been excellent at. You're very good finance, financial stewards of communities' resources. And we're basically taking that theme that we do very good at and we're ensuring that our budgeting moving forward continues to keep fiscal sustainability in mind. You know, there's a few ways that that can be measured. Our auditor back in July presented our financial statement, our year-end results for 2021. And they noted a lot of financial strength within their report. Similarly, for the borrowing that we just, we're still in the process of ending it. We closed in 2018, but you would have just approved that recently. Anytime you go borrow from the market, it includes a credit opinion or a credit rating from, and the credit opinion is Sean Lentz from Ellers presented. The sale report, they, again, they're for both of our general obligation borrowings and our water utility noted good, strong financial foundation for both of those borrowings. So, we just want to, we just want to keep that going, basically. And so, our 2023, 2024 biennial budget, we're, we're essentially building that budget with that in mind. So, investing in the future, so we're essentially making, making decisions today that enable the city to continue to provide high-quality services and position us for ongoing growth in the community and being able to accommodate that as it improves. So, in the biennial budget, you will see a couple of things that through our broader planning processes I mentioned earlier, we're now implementing through the biennial budgeting process. One is the biosolts facility, which you as a council approved the design for, and then the Man Valley development. So, that's another one that I believe you've approved design for. That is in progress and we anticipate the biennial budget at some point within that, those two-year periods, we'll be looking to implement that as well. And then last is information technology. So, recognizing that cybersecurity has been and will continue to be an ever-increasingly important aspect of what we do, both internal to the organization but external to the community for all of our utility infrastructure we provide. We do, we are utilizing information technology as one of the major budgeting themes. So, through the capital improvement plan, there are some projects that we're implementing through this next two-year cycle. And we did do some staffing reallocations internally to kind of beef up, for lack of a better term, the information technology staffing capacity.
Judge Jones, just mention a couple of things on that.
Yeah, John. So, financial sustainability, a couple of things that, that I want to add in to adjust. One is we're evaluating the, the fund balance position of all of our various funds. So, I think, I don't know, we have 60-plus funds in the city, so 60 business operations that we're running. And, and one of the things that financial sustainability needs to us is trying to take a look at how we're doing, both projecting. We do have some funds that have a negative fund balance or project to have a negative fund balance. Typically, those aren't, aren't significant or long-term structural issues or things that we have to adjust. But there are some budgets that we're looking at too and some funds that we're trying to make sure that the short-term revenues match the short-term expenditures, long-term revenues match long-term expenditures, so that we don't get in the situation where we're reducing short-term revenues for long-term expenditure, which are going to lead to fund balance issues. Also, on, on the financial sustainability, that doesn't mean austerity. It doesn't mean that we're cutting back on services. We've heard from the councils that you want to continue to provide the level of services that you have and providing with some minor enhancements in services, but primarily a focus on the existing services that we have and finding a way to finance those services. Understanding that in some cases, those sources are expanded just by way of population growth or service level growth, meaning more acres of park or more streets of town. So, when we look at fiscal, fiscal sustainability, financial sustainability, we're looking at those services and trying to figure out can we fund those going forward. And so, that's, and the information technology, I think, one of the reasons we thought this was really a theme is information technology has a pretty significant, far-reaching cost impact, expenditure impact in all of these funds. So, we've done some significant beef up, we made big investments in the information technology. We expect to continue to do so, both on the internal, operational kind of backend, but also in the customer-facing sense. And, and as you are quite well aware, we've modified our business practices substantially in the sense of our, our mobile connectivity, our connectivity to U.S. council members, our connectivity to, to folks in the public, being able to access information remotely, and also our changing and dynamic workforce being able to, to connect with each other from wherever they are. So, that, that just, you could see that throughout the budget when we put it together. There is a very significant investment in information technology in this, this budget. One, we think, is A dividends every time we've invested in and one that we expect to be doing so as we move forward. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thanks so much.
So, then we have six main principles that, you know, again, the themes are kind of those higher-level thematics that we built our budget around. And then we've got some more specific principles that we have in mind when we're building our budget. So, first is inflation may continue to create repeated unpredictable changes to the costs of goods and services. So, from a fiscal planning and implementation perspective, you know, the challenge we have right now is obviously high inflation costs are increasing rapidly and to some degree unpredictably. And then with supply chain issues being as they are, lead times for some of the goods and inventory items that we're purchasing are quite young right now. You place the order, but it may take 40 to 50 weeks before you're receiving some of that, which we are, we are seeing. And so, we do assume that shared revenue and state funding is expected to remain at typical levels to prior years. So, there really weren't any adjustments above or below prior year. And so, and that holds true for both years of the biennial budget. So, we're just, we're holding that flat as kind of a, a principle of budgeting conservatively on our revenues, which, again, is, is a principle you'd find within our fiscal plan as well. Tax increment districts continue to play an important role in funding city improvements and services. So, in lieu of borrowing externally, the cities had a practice of inter-fund loans to our tax increment districts, the repayments for which we do include as budgeted revenues in our general fund, at least the interest portion. So, that is a, a long practice of the city that we're, we're continuing and does allow us to arrive at a balanced general fund budget. The fourth is some new fees that we are introducing for the biennial budget for '23 and '24. So, these were fees that would have been introduced in the last fiscal plan. At the, at the workshop in October, these were alluded to, but, but obviously were not included in the 2022 biennial budget. So, we are planning for implementing these in 2023. So, the vehicle registration fee, which we anticipate starting sometime in the first quarter, maybe early second quarter of 2023, and that would be a $10 fee per vehicle. The street lighting fee, which we anticipate starting early in the third quarter of 2023. And I'll, and I'll actually touch back on this a little bit. But what you'll see a little bit later on is that we're anticipating a $2 per residential utility customer per month fee for street lighting. And then staff are in the process right now of analyzing our solid waste fund, in part because of what Scott alluded to earlier about just wanting to revisit some of the fund balances within the funds of the city. And we will be coming back to you a week from today with some recommendations from the solid waste fund from a deep perspective. Staffing updates and flexibility. So, we've touched on this a little bit already as well, but we do budget for one additional FTE within public works, primarily focused on streets, but of course, other public works maintenance as well. We are budgeting for health insurance increases, funding for contracted staff support. So, this is essentially our way of recognizing that needs are changing across the organization and rather than try to pinpoint that with one FTE, we're allowing for some, some money that will fund contractual support across the organization on an as-needed basis. And then compensation increases for existing staff. The, the last principle, again, and I've talked about this already, but the two large projects we have coming in 2023 and/or 2024 would be the biosolts facility and Man Valley development. So, then jumping into the, the proposed levy is part of the biennial budget. So, the fiscal plan sets a tax levy target of a 3% to 4% net increase. So, you can look at your, your growth levy increase and then adjust to that for your net new construction to arrive at that net levy increase number, which is what, again, we have a target of 3% to 4% for within the fiscal plan. So, for 2023, the adopted fiscal plan set a 5.05% gross levy increase. What we're proposing is a 5.27% increase. If you drop down to the second table down there in that first row, 2023 for net levy increase, in the fiscal plan, we were forecasting a 4% net levy increase. And what's in the proposed budget is a 2.59% net levy increase. And that's, I was going to say in part, but basically because of the 4.14% net new construction that we have in the community. That's a, that's a very high, very strong net new construction number, not only for us historically, but when you look across the rest of the state, we would be in a, probably at least the upper, the upper quarters of the state, probably higher than that even. And then for 2024, the adopted fiscal plan forecasted a 5.09% gross levy increase. The proposed budget includes a 1.62% gross levy increase. From a net levy perspective, in 2024, the adopted fiscal plan included a 4.04% increase and, and what we've got in our budget is a 0.98% net levy increase.
Gosh, you want to touch on the levy limits later to the, you know, why not a 5% increase in '24?
Oh, so essentially, yeah, I can, if I'm growing on too much, Scott, you can do it more succinctly.
Sorry. You want to go back to that slide? Give them just a little frame of reference there.
So, essentially, the way the state levy limit formula is constructed, we were, we were essentially not able for fiscal year 2024 through, through the way the levy limits are constructed to meet what was in the fiscal plan. So, that is why you see a gross levy increase of only 1.62%. And then, and then that net levy increase is just assuming a 1% growth in net new construction, which is what we use in our fiscal plan. Again, as a conservative measure, we consider it was actually 4.14%. So, our 2024 budget is essentially adjusting for the fact that we were running up against the upper bounds of, of the state's levy limit. We weren't actually able to accommodate the levy increase as originally contemplated in the fiscal plan.
And we, and we are if we take out more debt. So, the only way around the levy limit in '24, and to a slustier extent, but to an extent of '23. '23, we already had some planned debt, so wasn't that hard to get to the debt exemption in '23 because we were already planning to take out debt? But if we wanted to raise the levy higher in '24, we essentially would have to raise the debt service by that amount in order to do that. So, as much as it's a concern that we're not keeping in track of the levy expenses that are projected in the fiscal plan, which I think you all are very well aware of, right? If you don't do a raise in one year, it compounds over the next few years and then it can start to get away from you a little bit. It seemed like a price too steep to pay to, to raise a levy just to take on additional debt, which obviously doesn't put us in a better fiscal position going forward. So, you're balancing that long-term impact with, with some nonsensical state letting cap rules. So, so we'll be talking in the legislatures specifically about this, this instance, right? We have a situation where the elected officials have told us over a long period of time in your fiscal plan, you're willing to have a net increase of 3% to 4%. In particular, you've said 4% is acceptable, given the growth of the community and service demand and what do you think is acceptable in the community. It doesn't look like we're going to achieve that, that level of taxation, which certainly can be seen as a positive thing. But it, it does limit our building, that there are things that you won't fund or that you have to be more thoughtful about funding because you don't have that additional, say, $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 revenue.
Question for you, Scott. Depending on how we want to develop Man Valley, that can help bring that levy down in balance, right?
If, if there's additional growth in Man Valley that's successful, then what it will do is probably drive down that net. But it's not going to drive up the growth because the growth is what you're dealing with on levy caps. So, so we're unlike, well, we're not opposing, so this council could do that. I mean, you could do, you could say, no, we want to get the levy up. But let's find some debt to spend it on, which I'm sure you all, you've all talked to me about fire station and things you want to do, but we're not recommending to do that. But what the new growth, what additional growth of new council member is, it's going to drive that 0.98%. So, the net, the feel to, to the existing taxpayers, people that it is, it's going to feel even less when there's more growth because we're only going to raise a, a set amount of revenue. It's divided against all properties. If we have more growth than we anticipated, which we did in '23, it just brings that feel, what it feels like at your home. Now, it doesn't mean you're not going to have a, you're not going to feel anything. A 2.5% 9% proposed, we'll talk in, in all of Josh's, in the slides, that some of you all like to see with the estimate. You'll still feel like you're getting a tax increase. Each month, you're going to pay a couple of dollars more for taxes. But if you didn't have the growth, and we can tax at the same level, you'd feel $3, $4 more a month. In, in the vein of the Man Valley, Man Valley is wildly successful, which I think timing isn't going to work out great. And I think most of the growth would hit '25 in tax roll, it's '26. But let's say it did magically appear on '24, we had other growth in the community, it was just really big growth. Again, it's just going to drive down that impact on individual property taxes. You're going to feel the new growth and the payments and pay almost all of the new taxes. That's kind of what we're projecting for '24. So, we're not expecting you to be local government finance experts and read into the formulas. We're also not expecting you to just trust us. But I want to let you know, you know, with some transparency that if we thought there was a good way to get the growth in '24 up closer to the fiscal plan, we would start, start to do that with the levy caps and then it'll be fine till '28, '29. But at some point, there's going to be a price to pay for that because that debt service will come off and then you'll have to somehow replace with a new debt service. And I don't think you want to get yourself as a city, I don't recommend that we get ourselves in a cycle where we always have to find another big project to spend money on in order to keep having the same amount of money. Now, that, that's a reasonable policy reaction. The council's like, hey, that's fine. We'd like to spend $10 million every three years, but you can't get off completely once you're down. So, so to simplify as much as I can, the finance director and I had lots of discussion as well as with executive members and others. It just doesn't seem like a good trade-off. We could get to the 5% growth, you just have to take on more debt service. And there's, there's flexibility within that, so we could just take on debt service for three, we could do a three-year note or something to just get our debt service up for three years. But again, you just keep creating a cliff and it doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense. So, 1.62% growth was kind of pushing the limit of where we think the levy needs to go. There can be debate, when we're not, again, we're not recommending that. You could then start to go through your fees and start raising your fees more in the 2020s. The impact of the tax, taxes are going to be less than what the council had, had prepared for. So, there's going to be an argument, you can be ready for fees, fees that you were thinking about. But that's not what we propose. What we propose is you're going to feel a new 3 and like, I think, like '22 was. The second year of the biennial budget is a very friendly taxpayer year. You're getting somewhat of a new oomph in the first year of the two-year budget and the second year tended to be relatively flat from an impact perspective to taxpayers. Say the year we're proposing the fees in the first year with the levy increase and then the second year is going to be a little bit easier to take for hers. And we're going to try to keep working on the levy cap formula because it doesn't make any sense. But I don't think we should plan on, on picking yet the legislature. And the same with the shared revenues. I'm hearing this across the state, and part of my job is to kind of hear what's going on and that, you know, what you should be hearing if you're not. If the state thought that the Republicans are going, even if the Republicans sweep everything and they get the governors, that they're going to support local government more revenue, but it's just going to be focused on law enforcement. We, we did not anticipate any additional shared revenue for law enforcement or otherwise. I do think there's a possibility that that will materialize, that, that that could happen. I wouldn't, I'd be skeptical because I think what we will see is the dollar amount will change. They'll just change the labeling. So, if cities are getting $85 million in shared revenues, they'll continue to get $85 million. It'll be $60 million in shared revenues and $25 million in law enforcement support. So, I don't know that it'll be $100 million with $15 million more law enforcement. I would be skeptical about those claims until I saw how they'd actually pull it off. And we're also not counting on the current governor getting retained. And he has also talked about how he's going to really help local governments and schools and everybody's going to get more support. I, we've just been around this game long enough to not plan on the state helping us much. We just, if, if it's status quo, that's what we're kind of planning for in the budget. And we have, to, to the state's credit to some extent, we have seen a little bit more in road aids, transportation aids over the last few budgets, even though we didn't plan on. We, we planned for this 0% increase and we may have got 1%, 2% increase in transportation aids. Again, our budgeting strategy is to be conservative and don't plan on the state kind of filling in, in needs. We're, we're trying to budget for what we need to provide those services with our own local sources. Recognizing that we're getting some state resources now to do things, those are the key. So, just, that's a couple of things I've heard is like, well, don't worry, cities. You're going to get a, you don't worry about levy caps because you're going to get money for law enforcement. And you could somehow spend the law enforcement money and, and you can use that for roads or whatever. I, I think it's unlikely that the law will be written out here. But it's possible. So, I believe the possibility of a policy choice out there for you as a council, but I don't recommend you count on it.
Okay, so, we're kind of coming out of, out of higher-level policy and levy implications and discussion. And we're getting into the, the 2023 portion of the proposed capital improvement plan. So, really, this is just a, a sample of the larger projects that we'll find in there. You know, there are some, some changes as to timing and cost from the 2022 through 2026 CIP, which you are aware of, that was those conversations we had as part of ARPA spending plan that you ultimately approved. So, there will be some shifting in the biennial budget related to ARPA. But other than that, it's, the projects are what you're going to be familiar with from the CIP you've already adopted. So, what staff will be doing is conducting a, a pretty comprehensive review of the CIP in 2023. So, we'll be coming back at that point for, for a future CIP cycle with, with probably a list of some new projects, adjusted costs based on things like inflation and such. So, that, that review and... So that, uh, that review and, and true-up, if you will, will be coming next year. And then this list here is the, uh, again, a, a sample of the larger project and the twenty-twenty-four of the capital improvement plan. So this was as originally budgeted. So you see Man Valley at the top there. This is kind of a second year portion. Depending on how, um, I guess, design, which I believe we're only at the thirty percent design mark right now, will get us a sixty percent and then a ninety percent in the months ahead. That, what we're planning to spend for Man Valley may adjust as those designs come in. And again, we exist in this environment of high inflation. So those two things together will influence what we ultimately bring back, um, to you from the design process. But this is what is, is currently in the, the twenty-two, twenty-six CIP.
Let's pause there for a good moment to just, to check assumptions. So understand when you read those numbers, that is not the general fund or the levy funded portion of those projects. That's the total cost for that particular year in that particular project. For example, South Wasn Lane reconstruction, those, we are not budgeting three-point-five million of the general fund left for that project. That's a grant, a partially grant funded, significantly grant funded, where we have a local portion, um, that I believe is somewhere under a million for South Wasn, the local portion. And then, of course, you recall, we had ARPA funding used to offset that local portion. So wherever we can, and we try to show the full cost and impact of projects, even, we're not just showing the general fund portion of that project. So the details in the CIP, we outlined all the different sources and uses of funds. So any, is there any questions about that? Or just so you know what the impact, don't think that the twelve-point-three million-dollar Man Valley is what's driving the five percent gross levy increase. Those, those two things are not connected.
Right. But that, so the, that, that project in particular is utility funded and tip funded. So there is no, no general fund funding contemplated for that project. Or biosolids, that is, um, sewer utility. South Wasn, as Scott alluded to, has state funding. And then the local match, which is going to be financed with the ARPA money that we're receiving. Um, street sweeper and electric truck. Um, electric truck would be through the electric utility. And then street sweeper, we have a general capital fund will finance that through. And that, that, there is a local, local bank financing or a geo promissory note borrowing that the, the capital improvement plan does anticipate us taking out for that. So then we're going to, we're going to jump into the enterprise funds. Um, generally speaking, the enterprise funds were budgeted with some of those same principles that we utilized for the general fund. Those were consistent themes you would find throughout the budget. One of the things that we do anticipate doing in twenty-twenty-three that you're not, you're not going to necessarily find within a line item of the budget per se, but we, we do, um, plan to accomplish in twenty-twenty-three is basically a comprehensive rate study for the electric utility, wastewater utility and water utility. Um, I've been working with Kevin, um, to try to get, to get those queued up. So W P P I would help us with the electric utility. Um, and then we'll identify a consultant for the, the water and wastewater portions. And that's really just to understand in a forward-looking sense. Um, again, going back to the business plan and how we essentially use those as fiscal plans for the utilities. We want to try to identify, um, with the projects we have coming in this inflationary environment we exist in, um, what, what rate impacts in a forward-looking sense we should be anticipating. The twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four budgets were not developed with rate increases in mind for our utilities. But we want to try to get our heads around in a forward-looking sense what we should be expecting. And so, um, we anticipate using, um, some, some third-party contractual support to do that as we have in the past as well. Um, I touched on this already, but again, for the electric utility, we are seeing long lead times on some of our inventory and supply acquisitions, particularly the, the wiring, I believe, and we'll get Kevin back.
Wiring and transponders.
Yeah, so we, we do have, I believe, forty to fifty week long lead times for some of that right now. So, um, that makes it tricky from sort of a cash flow projection perspective to kind of map out when those funds will actually get expensed, especially with lead times as long as almost a year, you know, what fiscal year that expense is actually occurring. And it can, it can get tricky. Um, but we are, we are aware of it and we're, uh, going to develop, again, those, we're going to look at those rate studies as a way to kind of help us get our heads around that a bit better. Um, for the wastewater utility, we do have the biosolids facility. Design is in process now.
Yes.
So we will have a, a design that helps inform, um, kind of the, 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 the engineers recommended construction value that we will then go out and see bids for. Um, and then, of course, the, the wastewater utilities portion of, of Man Valley development. The water utility, again, just keeping with those higher level, what, what are coming type of items. Um, the North Sun Water Tower will be underway. We did just complete our borrowing, um, for financing of that project. So we're not, we're not anticipating necessarily any new uses of, of funds beyond which we've already identified and, and made provisions for. And then the Man Valley portion of the water utility. Getting down into the stormwater fund then, um, North Loop, um, the, the stormwater utilities portion of the North Loop project, North Interceptor, which is just about finished, um, if not finished, just waiting on remaining punchless items. And then, uh, Man Valley development there as well, the utilities portion of those projects. And then for the EMS fund or the ambulance fund, we are still in that post-aline transition, obviously. Um, we're reviewing the outstanding receivables in that fund as part of our twenty-twenty-two year-end process. When we're around the time, we'll be presenting a twenty-twenty-two financial statement. Um, we plan to, to come to you with some, some options or recommendations for those, uh, outstanding receivables in that fund. Jason and I and, um, some of our additional finance staff have been kind of creating that roadmap and figuring out what we feel is, is reasonable for what we could collect still and, um, what we may ultimately be to, to write off. So we'll be coming back to you with recommendations for that. But the twenty-three and twenty-four biennial budget is essentially budgeted using, um, you know, revenues we're collecting from the other, uh, cities and townships that Alina's providing services to and, and then passing that all the way through to Alina. Um, and then, you know, rent associated with them using the facility and things like that. So that's essentially what you'll find in the EMS.
Josh, just a couple of questions if I could.
Yeah. So the rate studies, are we anticipating another rate case for water and electric? I mean, it just had an electric increase two, this is two years ago.
Yeah.
And water was not too far behind that, was it, Ken?
High.
Okay. So is that why we're doing the rate studies is to say, because we're not going to do a study and then not do a rate case? Because it's.
Well, they're not, they are not necessarily, um, attached. We've done studies before without doing rate cases.
Okay.
So we've done a couple of studies in my time here, where we did the rate study. We found that we had adequate cash. And we also found that doing a rate study or rate case actually wouldn't have been to an advantage because there was things that, you know, our rate of return would have got there, been reduced potentially, or there would have been some other reason why we didn't want to do it.
Okay.
So, but they aren't necessarily related. Um, but they're critical. I mean, I think there's certainly been plenty of news for people to read lately about utilities, lack of utility investment. Florida will be also a story, I think, of, of good utility investment. There's going to be communities that are case studies where their councils made significant investment in targeting their assets and done rates, regular rate studies for their infrastructure and are better off for it because, you know, with their team, they, their investments have paid off. Um, but mostly what we've seen is negative where cities have not invested, not done rate studies, not raised rates. But then they also haven't invested in any of the infrastructure. So we, we don't, we want to be in a position where we can understand, here's all the infrastructure planning we have in the bucket. Where are we headed and do we need a rate increase to sustain that?
With, so when we're looking at that, we're talking about rate increases. Does that include the future planning for streetlight utility though?
Um, streetlight utility would be a separate, separate rate study. So this could be every few years to, to determine if we have adequate revenues for that.
Will it be done at the same time or not?
Um, we're not proposing to do anything after the initial setting up of the streetlight utilities for a few years. So that's not on the work plan for this two-year budget period.
For the new kid, what is, I know what a rate study is, what is a case study?
Sure, a rate case.
Rate case, yes.
Is, so we have two utilities that are regulated by the state of Wisconsin. That's electric and water. We can't, we, the council can't just set rates for waters. You have to ask them, their own water number. You have to ask permission from the state of Wisconsin to increase the rates on your customers. So a rate study is just us, the city saying, we're going to take a look at what it costs to run this and what the impact would be potentially on our customers. And then we use that information to inform us to whether we need to seek a rate increase. And if so, we use that data to inform and defend the decision to ask for a rate increase. In the case of the sewer utility, the rate study allows the city council, U A P, and the U A P to determine if they want to do a rate increase or not. They don't need separate permission, same with stormwater utility. So a rate case means we, it's kind of like it sounds, we have to go to court with the P S C to say, here's all our information, we want to do this. Um, so sometime I've been involved in rate cases at the P S C where they've required, uh, one city I worked in prior to here, they require us to raise our rates more than what we could have proposed. So they said, they said, you're not raising your rates enough because of X, Y, and Z. We said, no, here's why, we don't need to do that. And they said, no, we're approving the rates at this level because you need more cash covers, more, et cetera. That's not usually the way it works. Um, usually they kind of try to work down from what you proposed, um, because it's, it's a regulated monopoly, um, for customers. But I, I, it's important that we have this slide on because we focus all of this time and attention on general fund for obvious reasons, because it has the most direct impact on people's annual proper check bill. But rates are, are equally or more important to the success of the community and its ability to continue to be a place for more. Because if you don't keep on top of your enterprise funds, you don't have those basic needs and necessities met, you're, you're going to be in big trouble. And like, again, I think we're seeing stories all across the country right now of probably well-meaning councils, I don't know, because I'm not in those meetings, where they're trying to hold the rates, worried about affordability, which are the things to worry about. But it's led to disinvestment or lack of investment in their utilities. And that, then what you've had is people pay marginal rates for no service. Means they, they haven't paid enough to have good service, but they paid enough that they should have decent service and they have no service because they just let everything rot. And we've heard loud and clear from the city council and from the U A P can continue to invest in the utility infrastructure in particular, um, because we always want to be able to rely on that, that service. Um, it's, if you don't have that service, you don't have much of community. So the rate studies also will look at affordability. That's a component that we've had. Um, so there's some indexes we've used in the past, like people's income. And then one portion of, just like they have the one for housing, they have those for utilities too. To say, okay, what percentage of the household income are they using for utilities? And then we match those up. Um, our electric rates are very competitive. In fact, they're probably better than most investor owns at this point around here. Um, water is about average. You know, it's, if you look at communities similar to us, um, you know, Minneapolis is going to be a little bit less expensive because they have more, they're spreading their costs with more customers. But Roberts or something is going to be a lot more expensive for water. Our sewer is probably our highest one to this day. Um, because we really clean that water up before it goes into the kidney. So, but, I mean, that's, that's the cost of reflowing kidney and treating wastewater before it gets to the kidney. Um, our waste water costs have historically been high. Stormwater is the same way. Um, it's not high necessarily compared to the twin cities and suburbs there. But Wisconsin is not historically, a lot of the breast and upper is stormwater. We have a pretty aggressive effort to stormwater, which results in higher rates relatively speaking. But we also have eight-inch rainfalls that don't let everybody's bases. Just, there's a value to that too. Um, so rate studies, if you understand, doesn't mean it's going to be a rate increase. In fact, in our evaluation of biosolids, if you recall, we looked at, if we built this facility, what does the rate impact look like? Best guess, without doing a full rate study. And best guess was we're right on that edge. We may be able to, to do it without a rate increase. Um, electric and water is hard to imagine if the prices of the pipes and the wires coming up. It's really hard to imagine a situation where the pressure is really difficult on us to raise rates. Is that, because the commodities are challenging to get. Um, right now, growth is helping us. So growth is, the growth in revenue and all the new customers is helping keep that pressure on rates down for everybody. Um, in particular, when we add a new customer, they tend to keep all the residential rates in good shape because a lot of times they're using electricity in non-peak times or helping our demand charges down. Um, and water and wastewater is the same, where there's kind of some consistent use there. Um, where we already have the plants in place.
Curious on EMS. We're trying just in that nineteen, we're chances that in January, referring to twenty, did we?
Actually, it'll be two years on November, November sixteenth. It's the day number three and.
Yeah, we did it as of a January first, they, we, we, they, they eased into it. What doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, no. We stopped providing service.
We're two years down the road and we're still collecting receivables?
So we do.
It sounds like we're going to hear more about this, so I won't jump out and hear it. But be prepared.
People are going to hear more about it. Understand there, there is legacy accounts that are in, in collections. Shaw County does our collections.
Okay.
Um, and then we also wanted to give the other payers their, we want to do our due diligence, you know, to let them run through processes. But absolutely, all of our receivables are aging two years plus. Um, understanding that on a good year, we collected seventy, seventy-five percent collection rates of about seventy-five to eighty percent of our total call volumes. So what the balance we have left, the receivables we have left is, is kind of the bad that, that we're just not going.
You don't have a red pen because it's going to be a charge off.
Yes, that is likely. Council will have a policy decision. But I believe at this point, it's likely a slip of the forward recommendation for council to do, to write off and forgive or fill that. However, there are policy decisions for council, council making recent options, which could include pursuing through tax lien, trying to see if there's anybody left to buy the debt, which I find unlikely. Um,
And we have to be tight. I wasn't going to answer the question. Yeah, because I didn't want to repeat that night more than I thought it was going to phrase.
No, it's Eric. You like, I don't want them to look at you like. About one-point-six billion.
Okay, that, that's much larger than I anticipated. Much, much larger.
And you, so I don't expect you to remember just that you've seen those numbers before.
I expected a four-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall in the last year of operation.
Yeah, we had, we had, even when we were running at our, our high, this point, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars from collectible every year. Because that's medical, that standpoint, that's how it works. It were same as hospitals, clinics and others. Um, we were probably a little less aggressive, but not much less aggressive on collecting past due accounts. So we did sell them to the past, Eddie or somebody had, had a penny on the dollar to try to get whatever we could. But we did aggressive collections through Shaw County and, I don't know, so. And I was, I went on talking to two different things, so I'm sorry.
And I was, I went on talking to different things, so council member, the, the. We will, we will reconcile this for the information, but, but one, a revenue versus expense and shortfall is, is not one point six.
No, I get it. We, this is a snowball of receivables that.
We haven't been counting, so we look at fund balance projections. And health and the fund, we haven't been counting one point six million dollars someday. In fact, we, we, from a practical standpoint, I'm already doing what we're likely to ask the council to do officially, right? We'd written those off some time ago. You know, once they're past ninety days, then we don't really expect to ever get them. It's not like one point six million, twenty percent of that has a one percent chance. And twenty percent has a five percent chance and twenty percent has a ten percent chance. It's like, those ones you pass that nine days or a hundred and twenty day management window. They don't, they already got a service, they're not particularly worried about tax liens. They probably got other fish to fry, but they're, they only, that's something fourteen hundred dollars for a bill. They probably also own the hospital, six thousand dollars and they probably also own. You know, and if they didn't have insurance, they probably owe, you know, they're putting their life back together, so it's. It's typically long gone.
And then, and keeping in mind that, that, you know, if we know on a good, even our collection rate was hovering around seventy percent, sixty-six to seventy-two percent. You know, this, this is that portion that didn't collect for years and years and years and years accumulated.
Yes.
I don't think we've written off ambulance in a while.
We, we essentially, of the one point six that's on the books in our assets, we've got about one point two million, that's an offset. For uncollectible in, in the balance sheet. So we're, we're essentially, if you look at the balance sheet, we've got about four hundred thousand dollars that we believe may still. Um, be collected, which we are collecting forty to seventy thousand dollars per year, it looks like. Um, when you look in our financial system. So part of, part of what we'll be coming back from is, is looking at our balance sheet, looking at what we're collecting and kind of reconciling what we feel is reasonable. Um, that we think we can still collect or propose as a write-off for, for you to make that policy decision about.
Okay, and these are good radicals to go down. And this is a good topic for workshops, so. We can put that on the list for the next one too, to talk a little more if you. To go out, do that. Well, I would say also that we don't have the benefit of. Marketing our one point six write-offs like the health companies do. They're putting it in their charitable care column in their annual report. And talking about how they provided all this charitable care to the community, where this, that's essentially what the city's been doing. We, we've been doing need space charitable care with the ambulance for. Decade. And, but we don't, in our annual report, we don't say, this year we provided four hundred thousand dollars in free ambulance rides to. To those in the community, which maybe that's just because we're not as good at marketing. But they have a requirement under CMS that we don't have too, so, central medical, Medicare, Medicaid services. Not-for-profit hospitals have to have a certain, they have to demonstrate a community benefit to do that through the write-offs primarily.
Now you're going to get to the slide that Mr. Morrison. Just, just, you've got two slides, you're two slides. So, and I, I really, I kind of got ahead of myself earlier, but just to revisit the information about the. The, um, the two fees that we're now proposing as part of the biennial budget and then that third note about the solid waste fund. Again, vehicle registration fee is, is ten dollars per vehicle per year. There are currently thirty-three municipalities across the state that have a vehicle registration fee. According to the, um, Wisconsin Department of Transportation's website, and of those thirty-three. All but four would be, would be higher than, than the ten dollars that we're proposing. Um, we do budget an assumption of ninety-five thousand dollars per year in estimated revenue. That's something we would, we would reexamine in a future year if, if this is approved as part of the budget. If we are then collecting the revenues for this, we would, we would make adjustments in the out years based on our actual experiences there. Street lighting fee, I should step back though and say the ninety-five thousand dollars per year, um, estimate. Ties back to the fiscal plan. So that budgeted revenue is something you would have already seen as part of the fiscal plan. It did assume the ten dollars per vehicle per year and nine thousand five hundred vehicles that are customarily kept. Which is statutory language within, within the city. The street lighting fee, um, we, with, with the structure we are proposing would be two dollars per residential customer. Per month or twenty-four dollars per year per residential customer. Again, going back to the fiscal plan, what we assumed in twenty twenty-three was a hundred and five thousand dollars in revenue. Because we were assuming that mid-year implementation with two hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, in revenue in, in twenty twenty-four. So, um, we are, as I think Scott alluded to earlier, the, what we'd be proposing here is setting up a, a separate special revenue fund. For the revenues to be received into and to finance the costs of the unmeasured streetlights that are currently being charged in the general fund. So we'd be moving that expense out of the general fund into this new special revenue fund, if this were to be approved for implementation. And then the solid waste fund, again, um, we will just be, we will be looking at that, going back to a, one of the first points Scott made in this workshop, just about looking at fund balance. Fiscal sustainability, um, and just examining the, uh, the rate structure currently for the two fees that go into the solid waste fund. Garbage and recycling and the core fee. And examining that internally, coming back to in a week's time with some recommendations for that, for those fees and for that fund. So to be specific. Seventeen fifty a month is what we pay for garbage and recycling curbside pickup. Those of us that had a garden, sign up to four unit, um, buildings. And then every, every electric customer meter pays a dollar twenty-five amount of core fee, which is our. Compost, our electronics, recycling and our large item pickup days. Those two revenues combined do not balance with the expenses that we are currently have. For compost, for electronics recycling, for large item pickups and for garden weekly curbside garden and recycling. So. We, we need to complete an analysis about what is the shortage that we have in those funds. And then you either need to reduce your expenditures or raise your revenue to get the balance. Waste management is not interested in lowering their fees to us. We could go to every other week recycling. What you think the council on a couple of occasions has said, no, thank you. So we think that's not going to be easy expenditure reduction. We know what that cost is going to be and we have contractual obligation to them. And then compost, we're trying to figure out how to manage the cost there and how about the grinding services. Um, and how we manage our recycling, our electronic recycling event and our two large pickup events on the expenditure side. We expect to be recommending an increase in the rate, the fee, because. We believe you've told us that the service level that we're providing is what you want to provide as a minimum level. We need curbside pickup. Which we did out a little bitter for, so we think that cost is what it is. Um, and you want to maintain the compost site at least with. Minimal hours that we've been, or modified, I should say minimal, modified, because they're not minimal, they're just modified from twenty-four to seven. Three sixty-five, plus two cleanup events, plus electronic recycling. So we hear differently from the council about what makes up solid waste and we can adjust our fee recommendation, but what we're. Assuming is that you want the service level to basically be the same as today. Meaning access to the compost site at least as much as it is now. Um, and those events plus the curbside pickup we created. So, we know, we think we know what the expenses are going to be. And the revenue doesn't cover the expenses, costs more per month. For, for a customer to provide those services than what they're paying us for. And we don't think you want to sub, we didn't hear from anybody that you want to subsidize those. Services by putting general fund money or something into those funds, so, so that's what. That's a long answer to staff will be analyzing this.
If we, so your recommendation is coming. If we're going to do something different with compost, which I've heard murmurs that we are looking at. We should have that done first before we decide on changing that fee, I would think.
We should, but we're, we don't expect the cost is going to go down for compost.
I don't expect it's going to go down either, but I think it's easier story for us to tell. If we say, here's what we had, here's what you're going to have, and here's, that's why it's going to go up. That's an easier sell in my book.
With the compost? Yeah, I, I understand that, but I strongly think we shouldn't wait. First of all, I don't think we can get that analysis done in a reasonable time in order to do it ahead of a fee decision. And while we have been waiting for that analysis to be done, we've let the solid waste fund go into negative balance. And so, that was our thought before as well, let's get our ducks in a row before we. Raise the fee and we can let solid waste go a little negative and then we'll fix it later. I, I don't think we should go through two, two thousand twenty-three or four. Without the fee increase if we need it just to maintain the current. And I'm telling you, um, probably we don't have the capacity to get the analysis done, given all the other products we've got. Doesn't mean we couldn't move things around, but. It's unlikely for us that, we don't, we do not believe we'll have a new compost solution sooner than twenty twenty-five. But we have a solid waste fund deficit now. So I, I get it politically, it's a lot easier to say, hey, it's the new improved compost site, and by the way, the fee went up three dollars. But we're saying just to keep the old, unimproved compost site, we probably need fifty cents.
Can we just pull Man Valley off the table for now and do a write-off?
I have recommended that.
Yes, you could, if you took Man Valley off the table. I don't like the answer, but I understand it.
Good, that's, then I brought in my job.
Okay, so I think this was the slide that Scott was talking about, where, here we are, so. The proposed twenty twenty-three net tax levy increase is below the fiscal plan target, which we did a week to already. Net new construction in River Falls over four point one four percent. The overall tax levy increase from budgeted twenty twenty-two to budgeted twenty twenty-three. Is proposed as an increase of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars or five point two seven percent. Continue for now and we'll move quickly. Uh, net new construction pays approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of that increase. Which is how we got to that net levy increase of two point five nine percent or a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. So that would be the non-equal portion of the levy. Down at the bottom, then you can see an estimated average tax bill for the city only portion. Um, of, of taxes on the residential property total, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Would have been one thousand four hundred and seven dollars in twenty-two, one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars in twenty-three.
But Josh, we don't know that because we don't know what equalized value is.
So we have our assessed value, so essentially, when, when we're, when we're saying it's the city only portion, it's the, it's the levy. In the biennial budget for twenty-three divided by the assessed value to create the mill rate. We are missing still the other taxing jurisdictions, their levies that would go into the TIF portion.
We can't control those.
So when we say city only, it's basically that we're moving in our budget that's not TIF related, divided by assessed value, which we do have. And then it's a portion per, so this is actually, I guess, to your point, this is, what we're doing here is, is putting this together for. Um, so this is portraying the scene here, so you have to portion your total assessed value. And the levy accordingly, based on equalized value. So then the twenty twenty-four, uh, net tax levy is also below the fiscal plan target. So again, I alluded to it on the chart earlier, but, um, the, the gross tax levy increase is one point six two percent. Or an increase of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and five. The, uh, net or non-growth portion is projected at seventy-three thousand, five eighty-five or zero point nine eight percent. So at the bottom again, you can see what the estimated average tax bill on a residential property of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be for twenty-three. And then there's your increase for twenty twenty-four, and then just to reference back to the twenty twenty-two figure again, that's, that's there as well. So we're looking at over two years, fifty dollars total or, I know you're saying it would be twenty-five dollars per year if you were done. Divide that across both years, but as Scott mentioned earlier, also the, the bulk of that increase will occur in the first year of the biennial budget and then. Levels off.
And so those of you that have been, um, I know we're running on time here, but those of you that have been involved, Mr. Paul, understand. We have two columns. We have TIS, in and out, equalization. This is our, this is a methodology we've used each year that gives us a pretty close approximation of how it feels, how it's going to feel. In River Falls, you've all seen it, where we have a year where payers come in. Because of portioning and other things, they get a bigger increase, the same for account, their same for county members are saying, hey, I gotta. I mean, I'm paying less than I did last year in city taxes, something years ago. Because all that has to get a portioned out, so this is. You know, trying to give you an estimation of how it's going to feel across the city. And with full disclosure that there's, depending on the number of cars in this household, they're going to have a registration fee increase. Um, and they're also, our residential property is going to see about twenty-four dollars in the first year of the biennial. They wouldn't have an increase in the second year, we're not proposing one. Um, so, two cars and a house, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, you're probably seeing about. Um, a hundred dollars increase in your city for, you know, fees and. And taxes over the two years, um, with what's proposed, so not insubstantial, it's just. We're way less than other things are, it's, are going up in price, but it's still an increase. We are asking people to pay more. For essentially the same services, and we recognize that. And we're trying to be respectful about that, but maintaining those services going forward, so that's kind of where that's at. With what we pieced together for, um, a budget, and I, again, I want to draw out. Overall tax levy increase from twenty-three to twenty-four, the second year of this biennial. Is, is likely not enough to cover regular pay increases for our staff. So we are getting more, we are finding ways to try to get more fishing in all of these department budgets. Because we know we have to stay competitive with wage increases. And yet, we're getting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in levy. Now, our employees are not all paid by levy, obviously. Um, we're fortunate in that way. And the one lie we probably, I probably should have mentioned to Josh again, is remember that the levy. Is about twenty-five to thirty percent of our total revenues. So it's. People's, how it feels to live in River Falls is not just their taxes, it's. How much their electric bill is, how much they pay in on their feet, you know, for water, sewer. Um, stormwater, garbage, that's the full, the full feel. Um, of River Falls, they have kids, how much they're paying for rent fees, um. But for that, they get all the, the full level of services that we have in the community, which, as you know, are well-regarded, highly rated. And people have repeatedly said in the, uh, the every two-year survey that they feel they're getting a good value. For the, for the taxes and fees they pay. But that's going to be, feel different to people based on their incomes, so we're going to have to keep watching that affordability index because. As you're going to see the housing study, um, when you get the revised housing study, incomes are going up rapidly. Way more rapidly than what Maxfield thought in their initial. So people that are moving here tend to have higher incomes, so it'll be interesting to see how. The new entries in the community who are looking like, at least this is my read, looking like they have higher incomes. On average. But their expectations are going to be for services versus what the existing residents' expectation of their services and then their ability to pay. Um, so that'll be, that's the fun of being an elected official and trying to figure out the policy choices because I don't think I need to hear that people want less services. Um, but the, the baskets are good, the others still has to have some level of portability or else um, it'll price, price all people that are here already. Even if the incomes appear to be going up and, and the new entrance. So there'll be more to come on the houses to make play with that. So I think, I think we have to end. Um, next, next slide, I think this side. Um, you will get a draft budget book and transmit middle letter. And then you'll have a budget workshop a week from today. You don't have a council meeting, we only scheduled that meeting from five to six fifteen. Um, if you have different opinions about the length of that meeting, obviously with council, the mayor or you could indicate to us that you're willing to go on. Hey, we weren't planning on it, but staff was available. Um,
Then, how many calls started at five thirty?
Um, let's talk to the council because we have heard, I don't think I've heard a consensus from the council about whether they're late or just like the five o'clock meetings. But that's.
Well, I think a council app is flexible, so. Councilite's fine, it's fine, but actually accommodate, you're having a lot of stuff. I'm happy to go five thirty, that means we get more of us here. It's like, I'm not, we're even have conflict in here. I don't have a conflict starting later. Yeah, it's fine. If we notice it for a period of time, if we run over, are we in trouble?
No, we can, we will notice it start. I'm just saying, that is thinking that's a ten-hour meeting.
No, we're here until your sales slide, where you tell us you want another meeting, let's just schedule another meeting.
Just because we don't want more meetings.
So I would, I would say, um, this, this five thirty, is there consensus on five thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that late enough to start?
Yeah, I have a meeting until five in Bays sting, so I can be here by five thirty.
We can just, we send an invite then.
Yeah, we'll send an invite and we'll modify the schedule. Um, and so we can, maybe we'll tentatively agree that our goal would be an hour and a half, so done by seven. Um, but it's up to the staff to be prepared to be here. If you have, if you can help me, if you have particular requests, meaning particular departments or things that you're concerned about, or that you want to permanent see the board. Um, they tend to come as they want and you shouldn't force people to the budget meetings. Um, but if you know you're going to dive into some budget, let me know. And then if you can, which we haven't given you a lot of notice, you certainly can talk to us ahead of time about that stuff too. Anything else, Merrick, you need from us from this workshop? No, otherwise you just get to your next meeting here.